Super Hit, 1049 WAXI, Rockville-Clinton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna let Colton speak, he's going for his Eagle Scout, and he'd like to talk to the board for a minute, so...
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for making time to me tonight. My name's Colton Feldick, now a Boy Scout from the tree pier in Rockville. I'm currently working towards my Eagle rank, which is the highest rank a Boy Scout can earn. One of the requirements is to become an Eagle Scout is to plan and complete a project that will help an organization, community, or individual. I've already spoken with the Rockville Items Township Fire Department, and the need and how I can help them. The project consists of painting the caps and nozzles of fire hydrants around the town. There are different colors for different pressures for the fire hydrants. The new painted colors will help the fire department know what pressure to expect when turning on the water, and it will help them do their job quicker and more efficiently. So I just came here today seeking permission to continue forward, and if you guys have any questions, comments, or concerns.
Well, I assume the paint, you get that from the fire department, and they'll identify what hydrants to paint and whatnot, and probably give you a little guidance in how to do the project.
Yeah, give us a map with the locations of all of them, and what color they all need to be.
How many are you going to do?
Um, the total of two-hundred-and-four.
Oh, whoa, two-hundred-and-four? You're gonna be doing this all summer?
Maybe. I need to get volunteers, too.
Okay, okay. Alright, so you're gonna coordinate with Josh down there and those guys, yeah. Alright, well, great.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck, and congratulations. Hopefully you'll do good.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of the day.
Ah, thank you.
You ready, Brandy?
I have, first of all, claims to be approved, and the amounts are the end of the month for $129, $145, $54. And then we have February 6th closeout for our first meeting of $120, $220, $30.
Yeah, I was just looking over those guys. You know, we have bills in here that pertain to last year that will potentially impact their budget this year. You know, example, Milestone, we had $13,283 bill for patching. They were all water repairs. Yeah, I don't, gosh, it seemed high. But, in the future, perhaps, what's the name of this case? The Does Center Point? You know, we might want to try for such small things. I know it was kind of a last-minute thing last year, but let's see if we can get maybe a better price. You know, it's $13,283 for, what was it, one, two on Rockville Road, one on South Jefferson, and one over there...
Thirty-six saloon.
Thirty-six saloon. I mean, you know, golly, guys, those holes. But, you know, you have the equipment demand even, so I don't know, maybe it just seems a lot. So, uh, that's in there, and we had a poll. One of the two poll bills would be getting $30,208. I think we had another bill about that same amount that pertains to last year activity, but, yeah, other than that, it's pretty basic stuff. I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There are, excuse me, there's some posting corrections for NSF number 10016212. Unfortunately, when someone writes this in our check, we've got to go in and make those adjustments in the system so that we can balance and move on. So I do have those NSF adjustments that need to be entered.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next part of adjustments are just water adjustments for $290111. Most of those you'll see are just leak adjustments. There was one pool fill, and there was a sewer charge error, but for the most part, we still do have documentation on all of those. Most of those are probably simple fixes that either the homeowner's taking care of, or one of the plumbing companies.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I've got bank records. I don't have all of the paperwork, but I will have it for you if you want to look through all of those. These are actually September through December, so that those can be entered as the annual report and finalized. So I just need signatures on one of each of those pages, please.
I'll move on the bank records.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are these for me, or?
Oh, no.
Oh, I just want to sign the top one, I didn't sign the others, don't I?
You're not listening, Mark.
Oops. I know.
A lot of tags on this one.
Yes.
While we're finishing up that, Cindy Todd cannot be available this evening, but she did ask that I give an update on our comp plan. Her and I have started that process. We've mailed certified letters out to at least six publishers. We've put that in the paper, so you'll see that run for a couple of weeks. The preliminary schedule of events are that the RFPs are due March 3rd. We'll review those March 6th, evaluate, and submit notice for public hearing on March 20th. We've scheduled to interview firms and select on April 3rd. Public hearing for the grant would run on April 17th, and then by August 1st will be a notification of the grant awarded. At the upcoming next meeting, I'm sure she'll have some more information on that. Right now, we are, like I said, just in the process of mailing those certified letters out to seek request.
Okay. See, so, what was that, four, three?
You can actually keep this in mind, and then I can forward you a schedule that is in the letter that's being submitted to them. The last thing I have is a notice of sale of real estate. I've already spoken with the attorney about that. We are taking bids on our Jefferson Street property that the town still owns. That is to be ran in the paper as well. Let's see. I've got that we'll open and consider offers to purchase the property at our meeting held on March 6th at 5:00. We'll do that at the opening of our meeting. Anybody that's interested could deliver to my office in writing, sealed, by the end of the day, I think it was March 3rd, until 4:00 on March 3rd. So if anybody is interested in submitting a bid on the Jefferson Street project, we will open those on the 6th.
So it's the one that didn't get any bids, so it's open, doesn't matter?
Yes.
So we're gonna interview those firms, back to the, uh, what do you call it?
Comp plan.
Comp plan. Uh, we're gonna do that during our, we have a meeting that night, too.
Um, Cindy and I talked maybe just a little bit prior to the meeting.
Okay.
Maybe in doing those, and I think those are probably more like be phone conference, like a conference call.
Oh, no, face-to-face?
Back phone, probably not.
Darn.
Depending on where the facilities that submit back are from.
Okay.
But I'll send you all the information on it, too. She's got a detailed letter that explains all of that.
Okay.
So we are picking a firm at that point, no scoring or anything, so, okay.
The sheet that, um, I do have, I think, when she was talking about that, it's kind of, it scores itself. The requests for statement of qualifications. So each one of the six of the firms that were submitted a letter that describes what services are needed, the type of contract, the federal requirements, and rate of qualifications. So once all those come back, they'll be reviewed. Each one of you will obviously see all of those, but the second forward to everybody, too, it kind of gives a little bit better of a breakdown of how that, you select that firm as well. There was one, two, three, yeah, I thought there were six that went out. You had to at least send to five firms. So I'm checking back with her because I did get some undeliverable mail on the addresses given, so I'll have to check with her, and I may need to check a couple of addresses and re-send another certified letter out.
Okay.
Sounds good.
That's all I have.
Yeah, since Snick's not here. Bill, are you prepared?
Ready. Okay, so we did not upgrade the, or renew the contract for the traffic cloud sign manager. I did get ahold of them. They sent me some software. I'm able to get ahold of that and change the speed limit and things like that via Bluetooth on my computer, so we can still use those signs. I had a chance to look at the first net phone bill and discovered that we had two extra phone lines that were basically duplicates with different numbers. They had the same IMEI numbers, so I had those canceled and were seeking that they pay us back for the whole time that we've had those two. They put that in, they're just waiting on approval at third end for us to get that money back. We had a third line that I got rid of. It was our trail cam that we haven't used, so we should be saving about ninety bucks on that.
It's a little thing to add up.
So, some of our officers work security at the hospital. Sometimes we deploy taser cartridges when people don't behave, and we have recovered seventy-three dollars and thirty cents for last month for use of taser cartridges, so we have money coming in to replace those. January statistics, we had eighteen criminal investigations, six were violent or potentially violent in nature, three hundred and eighty calls for service, four traffic crashes, three impounds, four incidents. We had two alarms. Those were not invoiced due to one being disregarded prior to arrival, and the other one was the library, which we had not given a warning before.
Okay.
So we did give them a warning as we discussed in a previous meeting. According to our ECWS, we had forty-five entries in January, two were felonies, ten misdemeanors, seventeen fractions, and thirty-one warnings.
What's ECWS, Bill?
That is our insight, where we do our tickets, our e-tickets, basically to kind of sum it up.
How's that compare, is this, what time period is, two weeks or a month?
So the statistics are for January.
Okay, how's that compared to last year?
I don't have the, I don't have the statistics with me right now.
Well... So we talked earlier about your situation with your Tahos and the darn rotor thing. You know, how bad are they right now? I mean, what's the safety factor there?
So Alan was able to purchase front and back rotors for Cameron's now. I did speak with Alan earlier, and I think it was, he sent an invoice, and I think it was like $400 for all four rotors.
Okay.
Which is what we paid for four rotors for the front, two sets of front rotors, comparable to the price we already paid. Alan was going to look and see if those rotors are rotors that we, you know, the utilities may need or would be able to use.
So you have been able to find some?
Yes.
That's good. Good.
Can those rotors be turned or not?
Those, those particular ones have to be replaced. I believe they can be turned, but I don't know that, uh, I believe the front ones, because they were not the high-performance, can be turned, but the back ones, I don't, I don't know that you can turn those high-performance ones.
I didn't know, I mean, if it was a casework, yes, bye, or, you know.
Alan said it was questionable on the, on the high-performance ones, because they're a lot harder, I guess.
I think you can on the regular ones. I don't know that, I don't think, they probably don't recommend you turning those on the high-performance ones.
Anything else?
That's it, sure. I think we're gonna have some, I think Nick talked about possibly doing some property updates, so.
Okay. Alright.
Are you ready, Nick?
Yeah, I can go. So I did have property updates. I did have a possible solution to ongoing claim, too, so I want to talk about that a little bit, but, um, as far as, we had court again. We received a judgment on one of the properties. They failed to appear, didn't do anything. They tried to correct it in the extensive amount of time they've had. So judge entered a $2,500 fine on the property since it had been an ongoing property. That's the most we're allowed to do on the first offense. So that will serve as a lien on that property, and I'll circle back to this later, once I talk to about the other properties. We had another property made substantial progress. We gave them a hard deadline of May. They cleaned up the yard, they've done mowing, they're taking care of everything. Besides, they had a little bit around the windows where it's kind of decrepit or falling down, so Bill and I talked a little bit, and we gave her till May to fix that. My anticipation would be that that case gets resolved come May and it'd be dismissed. That's one that we've been working on for three years, though. So it's finally to the point where they've done everything, and it was an extensive list of things they had to do, so it's, and she's a single mother with multiple kids, too, so it took her some time to do it. But I think it'd be dismissed in May with it resolved successfully. The museum on the square, they got their new windows installed. I don't know if you've noticed that or not, but they had broken windows that were falling down on the sidewalks, and she was very easy to work with, and upon being cited right away, got those replaced. So it's in good shape. I was gonna talk to Bill about looking at it, too, but no longer a danger to the community, in my opinion.
Or you, you probably walk by there every day.
Well, I was actually the one that picked up the glass when it fell, so.
Well, appreciate that.
Or parts of it, anyway. It had fallen twice, so at that point, we had to do something, so. But it's in good shape now. If you go by there, take a look at them. She did a good job, so, or whoever did it, did. We had another one we just filed on, on Park Street, that we're going through the process with. We had two on Virginia that have been resolved, that we had dismissed the complaint on. One on Walnut Drive, one on Voorhees, and one on North College Street, so we've, that's five successful completions. Again, these take a little while to get it all fixed and everything. There's two that we had talked about before, and he gave me authority to. One's on Erie Street that I think we ought to look at clearing up, and I'll get with you on that. Generally, my thoughts on that are if there isn't a property, and like, one has a state, a person's deceased, nobody's opened estate, there's no air or anything stepping forward, it's just sitting there, that might be one, the kind of properties we look at doing the exterior cleanup on, because there's nobody that we're gonna be able to go after and make it cleaned up. So I have two properties like that that I was looking at, Jeff, and I can get with you on that. One's on South Erie. Bill had some that I talked to him about, too. There was one that had a couch outside that had been out there for a substantial period of time, and Bill got with them, and they've moved it now, is my understanding. There's another one that's kind of back in bad shape that we had thought we'd gotten resolved, and we're now back to where we need to file on them again, so I'll go ahead and do that. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about, though, that's kind of an update on the properties we're working on currently. Again, this is a never-ending list. It just keeps adding, and then we get some resolved, and we add some. There is a program, and we just did this through the county, it allows for municipalities or governmental entities to recoup outstanding debt that's owed to them. Not paid taxes, not paid utilities, not paid fines, things of that nature. It's called the TRECS program. So what I wanted to look at is whether or not we'd qualify on some of these to use that, and what it does is intercept tax returns for governmental debt. We did this for redevelopment through the county, so you might be familiar with the words on it. But in talking with Roy when we were doing that, it kind of came to my mind, this might be something we could look at for the municipality also. I don't have an answer on whether we qualify on all these different ideas yet, but it's something with you guys' approval I'd like to look into, and maybe Brandy and I can work together on it, but...
Who are you calling it?
TRECS, TRECS. It stands for something about counties, I can't remember, but municipalities qualify, it looks like. So either small claim utility accounts, or fines for these nuisance properties, those are things we could look at as far as recouping that debt, if you guys are interested in that. But right now, what we're doing is we're getting debts and judgments and liens and things like that, but it's like if you sue somebody that doesn't pay their credit card, they're not working, they don't own the property, or, you know, they have no reason to pay you.
Yeah.
So just because we put a fine on the property doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna clean the property up if they don't care about fines.
So you want a motion for that, or you just?
I don't really need a motion at this point, it's just something that's kind of popped in my head when we're talking about this other thing. I was like, well, that'd work for the town, too, and if that's something that's of interest, I can look more.
Well, I think we should look into it.
I'd say I'm interested in it.
So that would help some with the outstanding small claim stuff from the past, but it would also help with these fines that we're getting, because we have about four or five properties that have fines on them now, so. And then we have about, you know, seven or eight that have resolved their cases, so.
What can you say on our claims for utilities?
That's, that's my thought process, yeah.
That would be good.
Well, and we have some from years ago, like two or three years ago, where they got judgments and never paid anything. Well, they're filing tax return.
Right.
So that might be a process we can go through. The way the program works is that you have to give notice to them, so you have to send a notice out, but the cost doesn't cost us anything as the creditor, because they tack it on to whatever they collect, whatever fee they charge for doing it is. So say it's $25 they charge, they can tack that on to the outstanding account they're collecting. So it wouldn't cost our taxpayers for the town any money to do this. So, but it's something I'd like to look into a little more, because if they know we're gonna collect, it serves more of a deterrent than if they just, it's just gonna be another debt they don't pay. And some people pay their debts, and some people don't pay their debts, so. But we have had success with this nuisance process. We did file recently, I guess I should update you on this, too. This is another path we can go. The building inspector had given me a citation for an unsafe property, and that's a different statute we can go underneath. If he finds a building to be unsafe or unsuitable, and it could be harmful to others, he can cite them, and he did on one of these properties, and we're gonna pursue it under that statute, and it has a little more teeth to it than the nuisance property statute does, to the extent where after a period of time, the building can be torn down, so.
Wow.
So that's something we're getting ready to file a claim on, from Josh having cited them, so. But that's my update on this. I think the TRECS thing might be a solution to some of the problems we're dealing with, though.
Pretty nice.
That's all I had.
Thanks, Nick. Did you have a chance to look into the cemetery endowment idea?
Yeah, to refresh my server.
Yeah, I met with Brad Bumgardner, we could go Monday, and, you know, we need to get a fund set up, it's a foundation, so people can donate. And we brought it back fresh in my mind, somebody donated $500 recently to the town for cemetery, and we've talked about it off and on for years.
Had you and I talked about this?
No, I just emailed.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, Brad, I think it's a minimum of $10,000 to start a fund, and we have two cemeteries. He thought we probably should start one for each, in case someone wanted to donate specifically. We have $30,000 permanent cemetery fund, and I, that's the question, you know, can we use that?
Okay.
To, to start, you know, the fund.
Yeah, I haven't researched that, I'm sorry. I apparently slipped my memory.
But yeah, we, uh, we, I think the board's in favor looking into it. We've talked about it off and on over the years.
So can we fund an endowment with public money, I guess, is what?
Well, it was, I don't know where that money came from. It's gone in books over, it's gone in books decades.
But the endowment for the use by the town, though?
Yeah, my, my, my hunch, I can't prove it, my hunch is that was probably donation to the town. I don't know, where did the money come from for the permanent fund and cemetery? Yeah, we just need to see what the state statutes are on that.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
I mean, we would never be spending that, that would be part of the fund.
Right.
It'd just be like having a CD in a way.
That's gonna be a simple yes or no, the other letter is no. So yeah, I can research that, I'll have that for the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry about that. Actually, I'll email you with that before then, but...
Yeah, it's, uh, maybe we'll get it done this year. We talked about it.
Do you think, I didn't think to look, do you think there would have been a resolution or anything done at the time that would go back to, to explain where those funds would have come from?
I think we've looked before, Brandy. I mean, it's been on there over a decade. I'm thinking it's even on there in the late nineties.
I mean, it's basically came public funds being endowed, though.
Yeah, that's what was recently donated.
Okay. Yeah, I can look that up.
And if it can't, you know, we need to figure out some, some way to get, get, uh, get that started over the, in the future, that would be a huge help, like the cemeteries to, uh...
Yeah, well, that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, that shouldn't take me much time, I'll get that to you.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, Jeff. We'll start out with Community Crossings, Grant 2023-1. Cost estimate revision on that, we took out the sidewalks because it was in Elkswood fence. The revised CE comes out for $549,178.14 with a match of $137,294.53 for the, the Watlin Howard projects, the CE's for those, $246,162, and $61,540.50 match for those. And Brandy, I can't remember if I sent you copies of the financial commitment letters you made, I mean, not of.
Jeff, I was looking over those numbers earlier today. It looks like maybe the sidewalks are about $57,000.
Yeah, roughly.
Does that sound, yeah, does that have to be some, we definitely want to go ahead and do that, so we'll have to fund that.
We'll do that on our own.
Yeah.
It may give us a little extra time to work out the right-of-way issues and that kind of thing as well, so.
But now...
Part of that project, we can still do gutters, though, right?
Yes, yes. We can do gutters.
The gutters are still in, the storm's still in, and the full paving all the way down to Rainbow is still in. To that end, I don't know if you started tree trimming yet or not, but I think I've touched on this before, but we need to keep the canopies off the roads if we can. I mean, especially, you know, poplar and cottonwood, I mean, they all are hard on asphalt, so.
Those two particularly are sap, driven off, it eats the asphalt up pretty good.
Uh, one of the things that the new guys have been doing this week, we put them right on alleys. They've been going up and down the alleys and trimming all that stuff back to get a jump on it, so.
Good timing, you're good.
Yeah. Doug told me that they're hopeful, depending on the weather, that they can get the, all of the alleys done by the end of the week. If we get held up or anything, it'll be probably halfway through next month. So I like you for durapatching today, so, thank you. Yeah, we've been struggling with that durapatcher.
I saw them out there this morning trying to start. What was wrong with it, Dave?
For some reason, we don't know if it's a weak compressor, or if the heating element's just not getting it hot enough. We brought it into the shop Friday and let it heat up, thinking, well, you know, it'll be inside, it'll, it'll get warmer inside than outside. So they fiddled with it, and fiddled with it, and it got all galled up on the inside again, and we didn't think we were gonna be able to do anything, but finally, they, they took something apart, and a great big lump of it came out. Lump is a technical term, by the way.
Yeah, is this first time that's been used in how many months? I mean, it's probably been?
No, it's only been a couple of months.
Couple of months, yeah.
We've had it out. Anytime it gets good like this, you know, with, with the weather, the temperatures get up, we try to get it out.
Yeah.
So we had, we had two guys, I think, John, and, uh, maybe one of the other fellows was helping with that today, so having the extra hands, we can try to get caught up on some things. Closeout's been submitted to Endot. I appreciate Brandy getting the invoices and stuff together for me for the 2022-1. 2022-2, I still have to get my bid docs out. We'll try to get that done this week also. And the electrical order, they would like to, uh, request some LED streetlights, and we've kind of got a promotion going on the Caliphine right now. You buy two, get two for a total of four. This will give us two intersection lights and, or I'm sorry, four intersection lights and four short pole lights that we can use for replacements up and down 41. The quotes there are $2,559.68 from Kirby Risk. That's the best one, and I've got the other two listed there. I'd like, like your permission to get those ordered.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On another note, along those same lines, as we move forward, and this came up when we were talking about replacing the poles that got hit, uh... I've got Hallifane, Veracudi rather, looking at aluminum poles. To see if, if they have something similar that we can use with the same bolt pattern and everything. So as these things do happen, and as our poles get to the point where they are right now, where they're not in good shape. As we replace them, we're replacing them with aluminum instead of steel. Also, I think we would like permission to go with the LED lights in the same vein. But until I have a quote, I can't really bring that to you, for the, for the aluminum poles. I don't know what the difference is gonna be between the two, but I should have that before team off. But I would like permission for the, the LED lights to convert those.
There'll definitely be a lot, lot less maintenance on them once they're.
Don't make a motion.
Second.
Paul, favor.
Thank you. Brett's gonna need some electrical conduit supplies for the parking lot, that stuff's getting crazy, the conduit, if we use the really, really good stuff. It's, I forget why I said almost like thirty bucks a stick, I mean, it's just getting out of hand. So I don't have a total price on that, but I just wanted to shoot that to you, let you know that's something that we're gonna be looking to get them for too long. Utility puller number one, we received two one twenty-three. Brandy's already talked about that, we'll get the other batch of poles here probably in a couple of weeks. Waste water treatment plant, we have a quote from BBC for two thousand nine hundred and one dollars, and that is for an alarm system. We talked about that previously, I think.
It's actually the water plant.
Water plant, sorry, put in the wrong thing, the water plant, we talked to Mike about that, just being able to, to know when things kick out. It would be greatly appreciated.
You in motion?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'll move.
Paul, favor.
Input's completed their three-phase extension down to Sill Street, that's been done, they did a good job. We're still doing some utility relocation on South Market. I've got a walkthrough scheduled on two fifteen at TM, ten AM. With Dan Jervis, who's the superintendent for IMPA, and Mike Adams, who's the engineer. Aaron Day is the utility coordinator for Structure Point in my electric department. To talk about tree clearing and other utility relocation plans. There may be a couple of trees down there that we're gonna have to come way back, there may be one or two that we have to take down in total. I'm not really crazy about doing that, I'm sure the residents probably aren't gonna be very crazy about doing that. Some of the trees may be outside of our right of way. So it may be something that we have to go negotiate on, you know, reimbursing trees or something, I just wanna give you a heads up on that.
Well, they're outside the right of way, the trunk, but the limbs are in the right of way.
Yeah.
Doesn't that qualify for?
You know, I don't know.
I don't know, we'll, we'll send it over to Nick's office.
What are we doing?
Well, the tree stump, the trunk is in outside of right of way, but the limbs are in the right of way.
We can cut the limbs, they're in our right of way, though we can't do anything with the stump, it's not.
I assume the limbs, the limbs are getting into where we're going to have power.
Yeah, if they're in our right of way, we can.
Well, I just approach the homeowners and, and, and talk to them.
And we'll talk to them and see, and like I said, it may be, may not be that big a deal. I think we've got it staked out, but once we get there to the fifteenth and we get a more of a clear idea of where things are gonna lie. We can proceed that a little bit.
Jeff, can I just ask something real quick?
Yes.
Cause I think I have that on my calendar for the fifteenth at noon, but are you guys doing something? Or you're doing that at ten, and you will be here at noon for that meeting with everybody involved, right?
Yes.
Okay.
IMPA is going to have their quarterly meeting here at twelve o'clock. And then about twelve thirty, we'll meet with Mr. Mees and Don Preiter and some representatives from PCI. To talk about what that courthouse side is gonna look like and how we're going to feed.
Well, yeah, we've talked about it in a couple of meetings, I think you've been into them, Jeff, and the ideal scenario, I would say would be the, the box in the ground. I mean, yeah, okay, so maybe the shacks have to upgrade to, what do you call that, an RV type? Extension cord, if you will, it plugs into the box, yeah, I mean, eh, 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 long term, I mean, having all that stuff up in the air. Is, is just, well, it looks kinda crazy. It's worked for decades.
Mike, I think will probably have pretty much the complete design, so he'll be able to give us a good eyeball on what it's gonna look like. And we can take it from there and see how it plays, you know, it, it'll be costly, everything's just.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, now, we, we have that on the, the, the west side, and we do that, we do that in all four, three sides?
We're just talking about.
Yeah, but, but whatever we do there, we wanna repeat, we have the same situation on the south and the east side as far as hooking up chacks, right?
Yes.
Well, whatever we do will be a blue, you know, a template for whatever, whenever we have money to do the others.
Exactly, so we're looking forward to that meeting. To answer your question here, I think we're good.
Yes, yes, thank you.
If the, if the quarterly meeting, I just talked about that. Water improvement plan, a second Okra application's been submitted, should be announced this month. Forty-one more sewer expansion, they found a couple of lines out there, one of them was an AMC power line, I think, another one was an AT&T line. That just got put in, that's why they weren't on the, the maps, and so, of course, ISI found them. That conflict has been taken care of last week, so they started excavation a little bit today, they're putting in their, their trench boxes and that kind of stuff. It's gonna be a deep hole, it's gonna go down to thirty-five feet, so it's pretty extensive on the.
There in front of the Scott Pet Annex, is that why they have those big, I think they have big poles sticking in the ground?
Yeah, that's part of the, what do you, what do you call that, not, shoring.
Shoring?
Shoring, yeah. So it's, it's a pretty good process, I talked with John Lindlade, who's our construction inspector from Structure Point. And Frank from ISI, we're gonna do construction meetings every two weeks. John Lindlade will forward, forward his reports to me, I'll forward them to the board when I get those. And I, I made it clear to those guys too, that if, if we needed to meet on something, we didn't have to wait two weeks, we can be pretty flexible. As things pop up, obviously, we'll respond to them, so.
So they're finally started?
They're started.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
How many years has it been?
Well, they're getting a lot of material in, I think they're still waiting on a few things, but, man, there's a lot of concrete structures out there. Sitting in shopco, wow. Wow, so that's exciting. South Market Street, I think you all should have received the email from Suzie Kemp and Ken Olson regarding the, the costs. And we had the local quarterly meeting on that this morning, Suzie and myself, and it's, uh. It's not looking good on the numbers, according to Suzie, we had three hundred and. Let's see, our cost estimate as of final tracings, which was back in October, was five point six three two million. They wrote, reran the bid tabs in January, using the NDOT bids that month. And it came up to seven million. Uh, major increases in aggregate, concrete curb and gutter, and concrete papers. Storm pipe and structures, water main materials, and of course, some lump, some items. I think right now in our construction funds, it's three point four million, is what we have down.
What are you talking about, Jeff?
Three point six two million is what we have for construction on that project, that's the federal funds.
Okay, well, yeah, they take out the engineering part of it, or whatever.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're short, we're short.
Now, let, let me just add this real quick, because they're also gonna run a CE in February. Using February bid tabs, and off of that, when it goes to letting, we'll see what the bids come in as.
Right.
And if I request additional funds, Kathy McKillop at NDOT, if, and I say if reservingly. She will review those, and if we make a request for additional funds, and if those funds are available. NDOT may be able to kick a little extra money our way, but keep in mind, everybody's in the same boat. Everybody's in the same boat, so if they've got a million dollars, it's gonna be ten thousand here, ten thousand there, ten thousand there.
Well.
It's barely kicking about, but.
Right.
We just know that things are blooming. Jefferson Street punch list was supposed to be done today, but.
What, 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 what's on there, I, I, I remember.
Casting degrade in two spots, and they wanted to put some cold patch down, the cold patch plant milestone didn't have anybody at their plant today.
Cold patch?
So Kevin couldn't put a cold patch down around those castings when he needed to raise them. So hopefully, that'll be done tomorrow, those were the last two things on the punch list.
Okay.
And that should be done then. No change on the charging station, we still have to get that board. Jackson Bordees and Beetle, I did get those cards and stuff over to Roger from Miller Pipeline. I told Roger, I said, let's go ahead and camera what we need on our end, because I don't know that Miller's gonna be able to get into those other things. On Jackson and Bordees, so we're back to that, we're part of agreement with him. For video inspection on his PER, just wanted to bring it up to you guys, make sure that's, we're still good on that. Let's see, he'll be here on the fifteenth for the storm board meeting, he'd also like to talk about I and I plan. Think he's got some good data after talking with Bruce, and I think Bruce is gonna come to that meeting also, give us some input on it. On our parking lot, I think we finally decided we're going curving on the southeast and west only, no curving on the north. Storm line upgrades, paving on the corner of Jefferson and York to alleviate the entryway to the dentist lot, that's part of that PER too. And, let's see, there was one other thing that we were gonna fix there, park. Uh, the gravel around the, the storm grate there on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, by that lot.
Yep.
Now, the parking bumpers that are there now, we're gonna re, we're gonna reuse those there.
Yeah.
I mean, we, there was some talk about, well, we talked about the curb on the sidewalk on the east side.
We can take some and we can.
Well, I'm not sure we even wanna mess with it.
Okay.
I, I, I don't know, we can talk about it more, but it sounded like we're going to use those there, which is fine, and, and that idea of putting them over there on, on, and, and that of the lot is.
We, we can if we want to, because they're, they're really not very expensive, but.
We might just wait and see what that, that, that individual does.
Right.
You know, just kinda hold back and see what they do.
Okay, thank you. Uh, UMAC guys, did I leave anything out? I do, I do need to give you guys and share some info on letting copper plan with the guys, it's gonna be our representative, reached out to me. And we'll set up a video or phone conference with us, and you guys definitely need to be in on that. Decorative light replacement at Beechwood Park is done, Brett got that taken care of. And I'll talk to the park board about maybe getting a couple more, so we can update a few more of those to LEDs. We do have our new guys that started this week, Mike Pettis, Tim Honnicker Jr., and Dave Marietta. Started on the thirtieth, and we're really glad to have them, Jared Lindley, his first day will be the thirteenth of February. And he will be our apprentice lineman, so we tickled to have those guys aboard. I mentioned the I and I plan, and the only couple other things I've got is, we've got that old black shedding truck. That Alan has cursed for the last ten years, and there, there's some kind of backcam sensor or something on that thing. But it's just, it's been a lemon since the day we got it, and I think it's probably time we part ways, so. With your permission, I might put that up for a sealed bid.
Make a motion.
Second.
Paul, favor.
Aye.
Do I need to get your legal description and Vins and all that kind of stuff, or just let me know how you want me to do that?
Make, model, that kind of thing, yeah, I can get that.
Okay, thank you, sir. And then finally, asset management plan, financial information. That, I have a checklist here from the State Revolving Fund, and really, we've got major parts. Of, this must include the following, A, a system map, which we have of both water and sewer. An inventory and assessment of system assets, which we have that. Development of an infrastructure inspection, repair, and maintenance plan, which we have pieces of that. Not for everything, but we have our flow meter calibrations, we have our pump and wellhead inspections, we have. All kinds of different things, well, our tanks, our water tank maintenance, that's a piece of that as well. So we have a good part of that. The things that, well, we also have an evaluation implementation of water energy conservation efforts. That may be something that we look into to add. But the pieces that, that I don't have, that we may need assistance on. Are analysis, analysis of the customer rates necessary to support the AMP. Item six, audit performed at least every two years. And seven, demonstration of the technical managerial, legal, and financial capability to operate and maintain the system.
What the hell, audit of what, every two years?
Yeah, that's like, it just says audit performed at least every two years.
Uh, okay.
I don't know if that's the, the financial end of it.
That would make sense here, they're, I'm probably talking about the, the actual system or some sort of thing, I don't know, maybe it is financial.
But this, Cindy recommended, we probably need to talk to, to Roger a little bit, and probably Steve Brock.
Yeah.
Or somebody to do.
Well, yeah, this needs to be on your front burner, we don't wanna drop the ball, I mean, we're just trying to be good neighbors and, and help the northern. Folks up there, we can.
Yeah.
And, and we have to be lead on this, just because we're the organized one of the bunch. But, so yeah, we need to call Roger, we need to call Steve, Cindy, you know, she's an asset to utilize, coordinates stuff, yeah, it's, it's critical, we get this thing done. I, I'm amazed, we, we, we had to have one back in twenty nineteen when we went for.
What, Cindy wanted two?
Yeah, and I reached out, but I didn't get back anything that was like a asset management, of course, we would have had to update that anyway.
Can I see that, Jeff?
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have a, an old one. Of course, I don't know when the dates, I'm not sure when they started this, they started this in twenty eighteen, probably, I think that's when they started a lot of asset management stuff at the state level. Yeah.
Cause that's when we're tracking a lot of our, our leaks and maintenance and that kind of thing too.
Yeah.
Go along with that.
Well.
Like I said, we've, we've got some pretty good pieces to it, we just don't have the, a lot of the financial side. So y'all reach out to them and.
But yeah, I'd get, I'd get ahold of them like tomorrow, you know, Brock's a very busy guy, he was, he was really fascinating to listen to, I don't know, you, were you there when he was speaking?
I wasn't there in the morning.
Oh, boy, he, he, he was entertaining with his financial knowledge, very deep. Well, what else you got, Jeff?
I think that's it.
Okay. I got some stuff.
I know you do. You guys got anything else? I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Nick go again before I let you go.
Okay, Nick?
You'd asked about endowment of the foundation.
Yeah.
Are the funds that we have, those are gifted funds that came from a private donor, then they're not like tax funds?
No, it's our, it's, it's our impression, our understanding, those, those were given, I mean, it's in a. Well.
So we can't endow public dollars, but if they were gifted dollars for that purpose?
How can, how can we, it's been there so long, Nick, I don't know how we can. I mean, I, I've, I've been here, I, I guess, I, I'm sure they were there in the nineties when I was on the board, and, and so I'm, I'm. I'm saying they were gifted to the town.
Okay.
I don't have any documentation.
On that, I guess, but they're not.
I'm gonna look at something on that, because that's a permanent, that was called a.
Permanent fund, cemetery permanent fund, it's been around forever.
Cause gifted dollars, we certainly can do that.
Yeah, we couldn't tax.
Right.
Oh, okay, well, yeah.
We can do that with gifted dollars, so if somebody's gifted dollars and we wanna create an endowment there for a purpose of the.
Okay.
Cemeteries, cause that, that's been done by a lot of communities, but we need to make sure that they're.
Well, just like the five hundred we received, we could use that, but that's only five hundred of.
Toward a ten thousand dollar goal, yeah.
We're, we're getting, we're on a roll.
So we're gonna have to do some digging into the, the. So we're gonna have to do some digging into the, the money, I guess.
See if we can find out where, where, where it originated.
Cause they're very specific on tax dollars, on what we can and can't do, but...
Little figures.
See that one, it's uh, something about ten percent of graves? I'll, I'll find it in Cenoty, but there's something I just read about that cemetery.
So the important thing would be the source, if we can source the funds, then it's something we could do.
Well, okay.
Anyway, that's, that's what I...
Alright, uh...
What is it, mind-boggling, Jeff?
A couple of things, Chris and I went and to the, what, what is this thing called, West Central Saw and Waste District meeting last week, and they hand out their annual summary report, um, always good stuff. Uh, yeah, and here they have the uh, uh, summary of what uh, oh, back what, four years there, Showspark County, and uh, how much uh, pounds of waste they collect, it, it's just amazing how much uh, we collect here in the uh, county. A lot of great information in here, uh, read it at your leisure, I won't uh, go into detail. Uh, the other thing, I, I, and I don't need to talk about it much, but I did update our project schedule, I was just trying to wrap my head around some of the things we're confronted with, given all the increases everywhere, um, you know, South Market especially. Yeah, i- it's just uh, yeah, costs are going up everywhere. But uh, so yeah, I, I don't know, I, I put that fifty-seven thousand for sidewalks, Jeff, under community crossing area, and tried to figure out, okay, where can we come up with that? I took out, uh, I did have Sugar Tree Alley, I think it's called, the post office thing, I took that totally off right now, just, just, we have enough to worry about, and trying to come up with funds, and not knowing what some of these projects' final cost may be. Um, so yeah, it uh, nothing very exciting there, we're, we're just uh, we're in good shape, it's just everything's costing more these days. So yeah, on the back couple pages, there's a lot of just little notes about what's going on with all the funds listed across the top. So in case you wanted to know, now you know. Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't too bad, was it? Oh, Jeff, I, 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 you sent out your ma, your schedule last week, and I've had a little time to look at it. Uh, great start, uh...
Anything you think I need to edit or add or change, you just let me know?
What I've been doing is take, I set up a tab in a spreadsheet for each department kinda, and pulling stuff in the master, to try to get it more organized, so you know, make it easier to follow, I'll send you a copy once I get that cleaned up a little more, and then, then I can maybe look at it and the rest of the work and look at it and decide, okay, well, is there anything else you wanna throw in there? Yeah, there's just a lot, I think you got by everything I, I, under the sun in here.
Yeah, it looked good, um, you have, are you having some actual, I mean, in your mind, do you have guys assigned to something that you're looking at a month from now, two months from now?
Like, for example, you know, we're talking about the, the alleys right now, we're gonna get to the streets, probably the streetways next will be our focus. So, and I'll probably use pretty much the, the same guys that have been working on the alleys. And, and it'll probably stay within, you know, departmental lines too. Some of it will be handled by the electric department with regard to tree removal, that kinda thing. Others, when we're just doing the trimming, that'll probably be street department, so there's a lot of crossover.
So you have it set up as a goal, I mean, you know, I mean, for you, you're saying, you know, I want this much done by, I mean, you're doing it more than a quarter now, right, since you've divided the town into three sections?
Yeah.
So you're doing it walking for?
Well, I think with the, I think the alleys, for example, I think I've got it down for twice during the year. Figure we'll do a cutback in the winter, and then when we get some leaves back on them, uh, probably, I, I think I put maybe August. Going back out and hit them again, because by then you have some leaves on there, and you can kinda see a little bit better. If we need to do it again before that, we can.
Is it possible for us to get that schedule, I mean, your dated schedule for what you would like to see, you know, January, February, March, April, and then I'm assuming you're doing, you know, May, June, July, August, and are you doing stuff quarterly, or are you doing it in thirds? Cause you, you cut the town up in thirds, so...
Yeah, I have only been thinking, I have been thinking in terms of thirds with some of that stuff, I've been thinking about what can we get done in, as a whole, so... Yeah, let me think about that in the product.
Well, I think that would give us a little better grasp on, I mean, we can haul something on there too, I guess, and see how your production's coming along.
Hey, are we meeting two weeks from today, or are we closed out there, are we meeting in presence now?
Yeah, I don't think it's a holiday.
Okay.
I think we're fine.
I have one more question for you.
Thanks for the reminder.
Who's brought my attention about uh, swearing in
Yeah.
of officers on other boards? Um, does that have to be done by the county, or county, by the circuit court, or?
So there are some that require it to be the county, the other ones allow it for a different official to do it. If you have a specific one, you might give me that, and I can tell you who it is, or...
Well, uh, I'm on an email chain that started, and I don't know if the state is looking at this as a whole, but I, I'm on an email chain of, of board presidents and mayors in Indiana. Uh, and it's been brought to somebody's attention that some merit boards, police commissions are not swearing in their members. And from the IC code that I read, it states that you, it, it should be done through the circuit court.
Usually you do that in conjunction with when you're executing the bonds, you, like, when you're bringing somebody on, you get a bond, that you get the person sworn in. I can't tell you whether they're doing that or not, I have no idea, I can't remember.
I, I didn't either, I just wanna make sure we're in compliance.
Usually you would bond them and swear them in right when they're getting ready, right when they come in.
But is that done through the court though, like something that the judge?
I mean, it's...
Like, all do the officers, let's say, just for, you know, those purposes there, and seal their um, signature of swearing in, but...
It's gonna be whatever the statute says per the particular board. I mean, the statutes specifically say sworn in by, and it say what officials they can be sworn in by.
Okay.
Okay. I talked to John, he didn't have an issue with, I mean, you know, he said, "We need to get to the court, we will."
I don't know if they did or not, he would know if they did.
Well, he thought that Brandy swore him in, that's why I was asking that question, but...
I only can recall one member, and they took care of it at the courthouse and brought me their paperwork.
Yeah.
And because they signed the oath of office at the courthouse there, so...
Yeah, and that's typically where it gets done at.
We don't have a, a book here, I mean, it's in the clerk's office or the courtroom.
I mean, if you want me to find it, somebody else that can do it, that I'm, I'll have to pull...
Oh, I don't know, I don't think...
Otherwise, I would tell you to go over there and do it, just because they knew everybody else, so...
And I, I'm sure they are, I just wanna make sure we're in compliance with it, so...
Yeah, now, that's a standard thing, when you take a, a office or, you know, that kinda thing, merit board specifically.
Well, now, apparently some towns aren't doing it, I mean, it, it's getting slipped through the cracks, so that's why...
I, I can tell you, like, having inherited some towns, or some counties, or some other entities that, you know, not everybody operates the same.
Right.
Some people do what they're supposed to do, and some people do other things, and...
And going through that, they, the state is asking for more and more and more and more detailed information on these annual reports, so...
You're gonna see that, cause they're nailing the townships also on different stuff. So it's a, apparently whoever's in charge of that, the state level's making a focus on making sure. And it's not just towns, but townships, you know, county, counties are usually pretty good about that, but there's a lot of towns out there, not all the towns even have legal representation, so they're just willy-nilly doing things, and but my recollection was, since I've been here, I think you've been going over there to have them sworn in, so...
Well, I know we do when we're elected.
Chris and I did, by golly.
Well, I, I think my recollection is that your police board did that too, but I mean, I, I can't swear to that, you know, I hope they did.
Well, that's...
I'll check, because I think I'm gonna need their information submitted to me, obviously it didn't come back, like I said, there's only one member of the merit board currently that I have their oath of office paperwork from there.
If not, we should clean it up if we can, so...
It's gonna have to be uploaded to the annual reports.
Yeah, so we have to clean it up if we don't have it, so...
When someone gets sworn in, is their documentation, if it is along with them?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yep, well, does anybody else have anything?
My memory's not what it once was.
Just wait.
I'm with you on that, brother.
I just have these things circling around out here, do this and do that, and that's why you see me taking notes.
Well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.